Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of August 25th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Genthur.
Beth Coughlin.
Here.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
John Nunes.
Yeah.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Kathleen Amorall.
Very good. This meeting is being recorded. It will be rebroadcast on DCTV and can be streamed on their YouTube channel. We now welcome public comment from the audience on a topic on this evening's agenda. A reminder about public comment. The school committee will not respond, but will listen and consider the input presented. We have allowed 10 minutes for this. Please approach the mic and state your name and keep your comments to three minutes so others will have time to speak. I believe it's the last week of summer. And no one wants to speak. So, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Has everyone read the regular minutes of July 21st, 2025?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous approval of the regular minutes of July 21st, 2025? And the executive session minutes of July 21st, 2025?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
With the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's going to be a short meeting. We're going to move right to the superintendent's update.
Let me go CPAC.
CPAC.
Yep. That's part of it.
That's okay. So Ms. D'Necio is going to come up and share with you the information, the data from the CPAC survey that she conducted, that Special Ed Office conducted. That's okay. Back in, when was it? In June? April to June.
It's been a very long day.
Yes, it has.
Good evening, everyone. Every year, the CPAC Special Ed Parents Advisory Council sends out a survey and the Special Ed Department sort of helps them promote that. The survey goes to parents of students on IEPs and 504 plans to kind of garner parent feedback around our performance, what we can do better, how we are communicating with families, how families are feeling about services within the district. So I'm going to run through the results. This is sort of mandated through Desi that we are, you know, seeking meaningful collaboration with the CPAC and the school committee. So this is part of that. So what I did was kind of compare survey results this year to last year because those are my two data points at this point. We had about 11% response rate, which was slightly higher than last year, so I'll take that. Most of our respondents had students receiving IEP services. There were also quite a large percentage of students on 504 accommodation plans as well. So that was sort of who was filling the survey out. This is a Likert scale. It goes from strongly disagree to strongly agree. The first question was around the eligibility and referral process. That's a lot of paperwork, a lot of back and forth communication between the school, our office at Bush Street, and the parent. And I'm glad to say that the strongly agree category went up 4% from last year. So that was excellent. We are increasingly smoother and more efficient, which is good news. Evaluation reports were explained clearly and were easy to understand. Again, that strongly agree category went up 9%. I think that this is always a work in progress. Again, we swim in the water and the words we say mean a lot to us, but sometimes to parents, you know, we're using a lot of lingo and a lot of technical language. So anytime we can use clear language, describe a strengths-based approach with parents, I think is where we're trying to go. The next question was that the IEP and the 504 were explained in detail. Again, our strongly agree category went up by 8%. Last year, if you recall, we had a new IEP form in Massachusetts, and I think that our teams did a great job being very explicit with parents as they were walking through that. So that was good news. Parent and guardian concerns were addressed during the team. Again, that strongly agree category went up by 7%. So overall, a very positive year. The other thing addressed in this survey is bullying. So the first question said, "Has your child experienced bullying?" And if the answer is yes, "Did you bring that to the school?" So we actually did see a little bit of increase in the bullying being experienced, according to parents, but a decrease in it being discussed with the school. And I think a lot of that is probably because of social media and parents not really knowing how to navigate those systems and what is the school's job versus not the school's job. So I think this might not be only a special ed issue. I think this continues to be sort of something that we all are looking out for, making sure our students are being safe and kind in all modalities. And then the last question is, "If you brought it to the school, was it resolved?" And again, this increase with 2% more feeling like the bullying had been addressed. So that was sort of the meat and potatoes of the survey. But the best part of the survey was when parents get to nominate a staff member for the Above and Beyond Award. So the Above and Beyond Award is an award for any staff member who parents feel consistently goes above and beyond to support and make student school experience as positive as they can be this year. And we had quite a number of winners from really all buildings, all levels, and all jobs, really. We had Linda DeSilva, who was a substitute teacher at the middle school, Caitlin DeFaria, a special ed teacher at Quinn, Dawn DeFruschio, who is also a special ed teacher at Quinn. We had Peg Gallagher, special ed teacher at Potter, Rebecca Kelly, who is a second grade teacher at Quinn, Kim Rio, a special ed teacher at the middle school, Mary Ann Sorensen, speech-language pathologist, Heidi Spicer, preschool teacher, Kelly Steele, preschool teacher, and my favorite was Anna Tavars, who is a lunch and recess monitor at Potter, because it just goes to show you that we all play a big part in the lives of making children feel special. Dr. Adja Thomas and Lindsay Vafides, who's a special ed teacher at Quinn. So they were all notified by the CPAC about their win, and I hope that that news started off their school year in a positive way because it's hard to come back to work. So we need to make sure we're doing it for the right reasons. And that's all I have. Did anyone have any questions about the survey? Or, oh, before I leave, I have to plug our first meeting. The first meeting of CPAC will be Thursday, October 9th, at Cushman School. We'll talk about Special Ed 101 and parents' rights. So more information will be going home about that in electronic backpacks, but I just wanted to share that while I was up here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, perfect.
No.
Good, good news.
Thank you. I love that all your percentages went up on the good side. And yeah, I wish more people would respond to your survey. I think it's valuable information. The more people who participate, the better we can be.
True.
But thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
And now.
Okay, and now. Thank you. So, good evening again, everyone. I want to share that we held our convocation today, and I'm pleased to report out that there was such great energy in this space. We had the joy of welcoming back all our faculty and staff for what I think will be an exceptional school year. And based on the energy in the room today, in the auditorium, in the cafeteria, you could hear that there was real enthusiasm for being there. And as, you know, Ms. D'Necio just said, it's not easy to come back August 25th, but people certainly came back with, I would say, in a way that there was excitement and it was palpable, and they were happy to see each other. And I think we're in a good place to start off the year in a really positive way. This year, as you know, we're leading with the theme of genuine appreciation, and that was the theme of our convocation today. And this is a commitment to recognizing and valuing the incredible contributions of every member of our school community. And this couldn't be more fitting, as we witnessed firsthand, the dedication and enthusiasm our educators bring to their work. And I just want to take a moment to just, as I did when we met a week ago, just say publicly how much we appreciate the work of the school committee. We had an opportunity to share that with our faculty and staff today. But as superintendent and central office leaders, I think I can say confidently and speak for all of us when we say how appreciative we truly are of our committee and the support that you give to us. And because it's really very clear that your commitment is to the children in the Dartmouth Public Schools, and I wanted to offer you a token of our appreciation as we offered a token of our appreciation to all of our staff today. So I'm just going to pass down our Dartmouth pins. You can see I'm wearing it proudly. And each of you will now have one to wear yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a small token of our appreciation for the work that you do.
Did I pass over now?
I didn't.
Missing one? I knew I had one too many, so there we go.
Sticky fingers.
Okay.
So, right, and I have my Dartmouth green on today, and so it was just all about celebrating the Dartmouth community today. And we're genuinely excited to be back together. And there's something, even for us who really worked 12 months, there's still something bittersweet about the end of summer vacation, but our faculty came back refreshed and they're happy. And I even received a few emails from staff saying how excited they were and how much they appreciated that we are starting the year with appreciation. Imagine that. And we're all learning to say thank you when somebody offers us appreciation in a really clear way. So something special in today's convocation just really reminds us all of what we do and why it's so important. And with that, I just also like to, now that our contracts are all settled and been ratified by the DEA and many other bargaining groups, but with the support of the school committee, we just want to, again, share with folks how successful our contract negotiations were. We were able to, with the DEA, I think we settled with almost every bargaining unit by the end of the school year. There were a few. Mr. Kylie, I know you were working with after, but certainly by the first week in July. So we're grateful to our union leadership, who brought professionalism, expertise, genuine care, their commitment to finding solutions that work for everyone was what made this contract settlement possible. And all who participated in the negotiation process, whether your union representatives, district administrators, support staff, thank you for your patience, because there was a lot of that that went on, flexibility, and mostly collaborative spirit. These conversations, they're not always easy, but when they're conducted with mutual respect and collegiality, there's a way to find solutions and compromises that allow us all to move forward in a healthy way. And most importantly, I also want to thank the school committee because you're behind the scenes, but your guidance and your support and your trust throughout the process was critical in allowing us to settle what we believe is a really fair contract. And your commitment to the fiscal stewardship that the community entrusts you with and recognizing the value of our employees was, I think, the most important part of settling our contract. I also want to thank the district office team because they spent so much time, not only behind the scenes, but at the table. And we really worked hard to be able to settle what we all believe is a fair contract for our educators. And as I've said many, many times, when we invest in people, we invest in our students. And that contract settlement, I think, represents the best of both worlds. So with that, under teaching and learning, the principal and Dartmouth Leadership Team Retreat was held on July 29th, 30th, and 31st. I'm really proud of the work that we were able to accomplish during those three days. We are fortunate to have access to UMass Dartmouth, who welcome us and allow us to use their space, which, as I said in the past, I think is so important to remove us from our everyday work environment and to be somewhere different where we can just focus on the work of really what is three days together, where we're just completely focused on what we're doing in terms of professional learning and school support and student support for the year. This year, our leadership themes are focused on strategic leadership. We are working closely with Lynch Leadership on instructional excellence, and that's a through line for us. That's work that we started year one and then brought Lynch into year two. And here we are in year three, where there is, I think, a clear focus on excellent instruction and what that relationship is to instructional excellence. So, and then an update on kindergarten enrollment. It continues to be updated. We do have a few folks that are still in the process of registration, but right now, we have 205 students slated to be, are you ready for this, slated to be our class of 2,038. Class of 2,038. They'll be starting school on Wednesday. But our total enrollment as of today is 3,335, which is up slightly from last year. I think about maybe close to 20 students. But we're pleased to see that we have a few more students who are committed to coming to the Dartmouth Public Schools. Jim is going to talk about some of the projects that have gone on over the summer, and there've been quite a few. Folks have been very, very busy getting the buildings ready to open school on Wednesday.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. Yeah, really just want to thank our custodial staff and our maintenance staff for all the work that they've done over the summer. We're finalizing the fire alarm project at DeMello and Potter. They're both operational systems, some little fine tuning that's still going on, but lots of other smaller projects, maintaining our buildings and trying to, you know, keep these facilities in good shape to welcome kids. One thing I did want to mention is I'll bring forward to you at our next school committee meeting, the capital improvement plan requests that would be up for consideration at the October town meeting. So you've already voted a capital plan for this cycle. So we initially had received some consideration in June, although there wasn't a lot of funding there for those projects. So there is an opportunity here for some additional funding for projects. So I'll keep you posted on that. One thing that is high on the list, one of the items was the high school roof was in our capital plan. We had a visit in August by the MSBA, and we feel sort of encouraged by that. And we had a good discussion. Dr. Saban McGuire and I had a good meeting and discussion with the town administration about possibly looking to add a article at town meeting to fund feasibility study costs. That would be in advance of when MSBA, the board, will consider our application, which would be on October 29th. Town meeting is October 21st, so a little more than a week in advance of that. But it would be certainly helpful to keep a project moving and potentially cut the timeline of when a roof replacement could be accomplished, if we do receive support from the town at the October town meeting. So we're kind of in the midst of that, but it does seem like there's a willingness to support our request in that regard. So that's good news there. We do, in terms of the long-range capital planning, we have, I have a meeting tomorrow at Town Hall to discuss the specifics of the presentations that are going to be brought forward on September 9th and the 17th. September 9th is what they're calling like public service projects, but they've included Dartmouth Memorial Stadium as part of that grouping. So we want to make sure that whatever information we have is up to date and, you know, going to be a part of that presentation. And then on the 17th, there would be school projects highlighted to include the roof here at the high school, a middle school replacement, Potter and DeMello replacement, and Quinn School replacement. So all on that long-term list. So we're in the process of that. Mary Beckwith has volunteered, thank you, to assist with this. And I'm going to fill her in tomorrow after my meeting with Town Hall and get an idea of what the format is and what level of detail they're, you know, looking to present.
Terrific.
Great. Are both those meetings going to be here at the high school, Mr. Kylie?
No. So the 17th, which is going to be the one that focuses primarily on the schools, is going to be at the middle school auditorium at 6:00 PM. And the other, the September 9th one is going to be at the Council on Aging. At 6:00 PM. I can share some more information with you about those, but as I get it.
Okay, so under HR, pleased to share that staffing is nearly complete. We do have some positions that still need to be filled. We have a special education teacher at Dartmouth High School. We have a library media specialist at Dartmouth High School, and an ESP LPN at Dartmouth High School. At the Cushman, we have an ESP. And at the district level, we have a food service operations supervisor and a data systems technician. And so we're at six positions. We'd like to be at zero. But on the other hand, we also had 35 new hires, which since I've been here, that is the most since in my third year. And so of those 35, 21 are certified teachers. We've hired three new administrators, five ESPs, and then some, we have coaches. So variety of coaches, whether it's volleyball chair, a couple of monitors, director, a big one, a director of nutrition. And at Dartmouth High School, we've also hired a full-time security monitor. So we're close, but we're still always looking for, as I've said, substitute teachers. And we always appreciate folks applying for the ESP positions because there tend to be openings over the course of the year. So having folks in the queue, I guess, is really helpful for us. And we use those folks so we're able to employ them as substitutes. So it gives us a chance to get to know people and gives folks a chance to get to know us. So under family and community engagement, even though it's, you know, the beginning of the year, there's been quite a lot actually going on, especially at the elementary level, where you have, we've had new family tours going on at the DeMello. This past Friday, actually, we had popsicles with the principal. So that's fun. And that's for new family tours at the Potter. There were new family tours this past Friday. The high school this past Sunday opened up their school to freshmen on Sunday and welcomed them to campus for a tour. And I think from what Mr. Shea told me, that was really well-received. And the kids really appreciated the opportunity to come and walk through the high school in a relaxed setting before they get here full-time and have to find their way around. But on, actually today, tonight, so it's a long day for us, but our principals are in their schools. And we have some playground meetups going on at the Quinn School. There's a playground meetup event for kindergarten, grades one and two, and then grades three, four, and five from 5:00, 5:30, and 6 o'clock. So they stagger them so that they have a chance to interact with the families. And then tonight, we also have a couple of open houses. The Cushman School has a pre-K open house as we speak. And the DeMello School will be having an open house at 6 o'clock. And then the Potter is at 5:30, and the Quinn is at 6 o'clock. So you can see, like, folks are having a really busy day, starting off with convocation, and at the elementary level, ending with meetups and open houses. And so this is something that I think that folks are really committed to, making sure that when the students enter school on Wednesday, they're ready to go. So even though it's been a long day for us, it's a longer day for some of the people that are still out opening the doors to their schools for families and students. Under safe and supportive schools, I'll give you an update on the hall passes. The middle and high school are going to be implementing the electronic hall pass system. We'll have them at some point come and talk to you about what that is all about. But what it does allow for is teachers and the admin are able to monitor. what it does allow for is teachers and the admin are able to monitor students who are leaving the classroom for any reason, the time and where they're traveling to and from, which is really about giving us another opportunity to keep our students safe. So it's all about safety, but this is the first time, again, that we'll be implementing this, but we've heard from many schools across the state that are using the system, and we've had really great feedback. As a matter of fact, our new associate principal was using it at the school that she came from and has had really positive reviews of what it allows you to kind of figure out in terms of when students are really on the move. We're also excited to share that the Dartmouth Police have assigned a new SRO at the elementary level. I was able to meet him briefly today, Officer Ryan Reese. He'll be joining us. I guess there's still some safety training involved, but he's close to completion for all school resource officers. It's a pretty big deal for our officers, and we're really excited and pleased to hear that there is that level of training so that when our officers are entering our schools, they have a good idea of how to best support students and staff in a school setting. But he's going to be stopping by at the elementary schools tomorrow to introduce himself. And I want to just thank, I always want to thank the Dartmouth Police for continuing to support us for the safety needs of the district. And so that's it. That's all I have for you tonight.
Terrific.
Thank you.
That was a lot.
Thank you.
So I will say that our retreat went well on the eighteenth. We were allowed to assess our practices and affirm what was good, maybe work on some other things, and appreciate each other. Sorry, Chris, you were not able to be there.
We appreciated you anyway.
We appreciated you in your absence.
I appreciate all of you, as well as everyone in this room.
So in late July, I received a letter of interest from the superintendent requesting us to initiate, or to initiate negotiations for her successor contract. I, for one, would be happy to move forward with that. We have to give her a letter saying that we too want to initiate contract negotiations. And I, do we have to vote on that? Or do we just agree that we all wanted?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just enter.
That's fine. We just need.
We just agree on that, so.
Madam Chair, we just need one of us, Kathleen's not here, maybe we nominate her, to, in all seriousness. That's what happens when you're not here. But seriously, we need one of us to sit down and negotiate and talk with the superintendent about her contract, what she's looking for, and then bring it back to us and such.
Okay. In the past, has that been the chair, or has it been?
Whomever.
I was never here during any of that.
That's fine, but no, it's been whomever.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and you, with all due respect, you've.
I've done the initials.
You've done the initials and that type of deal, so.
But I don't necessarily need to do it.
No, you're, you're good, you're good at it, so I'm, I have no problem with that.
It's, it's the committee's pleasure.
Yeah, I know.
I will say I have no experience doing that, so I would be happy with a volunteer.
I will be, I will be happy to volunteer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Oliver.
We can certainly touch base, Dr. Saban McGuire.
Along that same line, we all received documentation of the superintendent's progress in her goals, and we do have to set a timeline for, did we just, filling out the forms and doing the work of putting it down on paper. And we need two people who are going to help consolidate all the information, and I know that you and Kathleen did that last year.
Yeah, I think, I think Kathleen, well, why don't we wait till she gets back?
We can, we can wait. We are not at the deadline.
No, because we did it, correct me if I'm, when did we do, has it been a year already in all seriousness?
Well, we started the process a year ago, and we were a little late completing the process.
I know Murphy's Law took hold.
Yeah, but, but we were doing this at this time last year.
At this time, okay.
So we can wait until Kathleen gets back.
And we can work on it.
And, and if anybody wants to mull it over and say, oh, yes, I really want to do that, that's fine, too. You have a, a month or two weeks to think about it.
Yeah.
Yes, Chris?
With all due respect, I don't see why we couldn't, at the very least, set a timeline for completing the evaluation. And then once Kathleen returns, Mrs. DeMello returns, we can put together whoever's going to compile those results.
That sounds.
How's that?
That sounds good. Yeah, I think that we ended up being late October or early November, but I think that we want to do it by mid-October at the latest.
Well, we've got, we've got a meeting the twenty, we've got a meeting the twenty-seventh of October, according to my calendar.
Yes, mine, too.
Okay. And then we've got November seventeenth.
Yeah, I don't think we should go that late.
Again, I'm just.
So do we want to be ready with?
Yeah, I mean, we need it.
With the evaluation, with the compiled evaluation.
For the twenty-seventh.
For the twenty-seventh, which means really we have to get it to whoever the committee is by the sixth, I would say. Do you need more than two weeks? Do you need like a?
No, it depends, you know, on the, you know, everybody's schedule type of deal, but, you know, the week of, the week of the fourteenth, because the thirteenth is Columbus Day. So the week of, you know, the week of October thirteenth.
Get the information to whoever's on the committee.
Whoever's on the committee.
Okay.
For presentation, for the final presentation to be done, when?
The twenty-seventh.
All things being considered. So. Makes sense?
Yep. I think so. So final is the twenty-seventh, and we, the committee members, will get our information to the subcommittee the week of the fourteenth.
Is that good with Dr. Saban McGuire?
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. I've mentioned this before, but now the deadline is upon us. The Mass and CAS Joint Conference, November twelfth and fourteenth, really by the end of this week, we need to email Ms. Gunther whether we're going, what days we're going, whether we want lunch or whether we don't.
Yeah.
And that's it, by Friday, yes?
Did I send you an email, Kate? I don't remember if I, okay, okay.
Okay, I'll send it when I get home.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the reminder.
Also, the invitation of the select board to join their meeting September twenty-ninth. We moved it because we wanted to do our retreat first. So the question is, September twenty-ninth, who's available, who's not available, six-thirty to?
Yeah.
Join the select board meeting.
Yeah, I put it on, I threw it on my calendar the other night.
I'm available on the twenty-ninth, six o'clock.
Okay. Six-thirty, because they do executive first.
Okay.
They feeding us?
I doubt it.
Are they feeding us?
I said, I doubt it.
Yeah.
They used to.
They used to.
Not, not in my time.
No, 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 but they, they used to.
I don't think that that happens anymore, just so you all know. I think that is long gone, and I'm just making sure that I have it on the eighteen.
Going to have to have a discussion with them.
The twenty-ninth, sorry.
Twenty-ninth to six-thirty, correct?
Got it.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. So I also wanted to say that at the last meeting, I mentioned that I was going to the first board and committee orientation meeting that they had at town hall, and it was Chris Vitale and Sarah Haskell-Aruda who presented, and it turns out it really was more for appointed boards. But they have a handbook, which I never knew, and it's interesting, and even though it was for just appointed boards, they would be very happy if elected boards and committees would look at the handbook and see if we somewhat align in the areas. And I believe the handbook now can be found on the town website. If you can't find it there, I can email you a copy. In particular, they wanted us to make sure we were aligned in our codes of conduct, which I think we have a good policy for codes of conduct, and also not having to do with that meeting, but I thought it was helpful, and I was glad that town hall was doing something like that. Because we're the, at the beginning of the academic year, I feel that maybe we should also review our public participation policy and just make sure that we're up to date with that. As I mentioned some things at the beginning of the meeting, and I just want to make sure that we're up to date with everything that M.A.F.C. has to say.
If we have feedback on either of those, who do we give it to? To you or to the town?
No, I mean, we, we don't have to have the same policies of the town.
Okay.
But they, you know, they gave some thought to it, just like we gave some thought, so it, you know, maybe they thought of something that we didn't think of.
Yeah.
But no, the town doesn't need feedback. It's just, they wanted us to be aware of what their policy was.
Okay.
So I would say that anybody on the committee who has a thought could send it to the subcommittee, and the subcommittee will decide and present. And I think that's all I have. Anybody else? Yes?
Thank you. I've got a few things here. Yeah, just going back to Dr. Saban McGuire about the convocation this morning, and it was nice to hear the two co-union presidents say thank you about the contracts being settled. That was, you know, that's the first time in a long time, so that was, that was nice to, to hear. Do we have an update? Are we going to have crossing guards at any of the schools this year?
So we are employing a crossing guard at Dartmouth Middle School for the corner of Hawthorne and Slocum, similar to what we did last year, but I don't believe the police department is revisiting, filling the former crossing guard positions.
All righty. In your discussions last week with town, town folk, any talks on budgets or anything of that nature come up?
Well, I think one of the commitments that we heard from the town manager, Cody Hadad, and Gary Carrero, is that they want to meet with us on a regular basis, and I think we were really heartened by that, that we'll be meeting at least quarterly to discuss the budget. So, and I, my feeling, and Jim, you've been here much longer than me, but that they came to meet with us, and I felt like it was very, they have a very collaborative attitude and want to work closely with us. And I think just their commitment to supporting us on the roof project demonstrates that really clearly.
I agree. I thought it was a very positive discussion, and there was discussion regarding the operating budget, and that, that was positive, too. You know, obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that budget, and there are some factors that, you know, complicate that budget a little bit, but, but I, they, they do seem to be interested in continuing, supporting a resolution of our financial issues in terms of, you know, some of the problem solving that, that took place, you know, in the spring, and continuing that, so.
I just, and Jim, if you want to talk more about this, because you're a part of, I don't think it's a board, but a committee, but one of the things that we did talk about with them, which I thought was really important in having opportunity for dialogue, is that, you know, we're reading about some of the new forty-three B. developments, and some of them are focused on families, which is wonderful for the community, but what we talked about was that we really needed to be part of those conversations for planning purposes, because as we open those kind of places for folks to come and live with their families, it's important that the schools are aware so that we can be planning for, you know, how many teachers we need, how many classrooms do we need, how many students are going to be joining the Dartmouth schools. So Mr. Kylie was invited to be part of, and if you could just explain?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have an opportunity to offer input to the zoning board process and comment on potential projects. Now, you know, obviously, we've, we've spent a little bit of time here over the last few years, sort of adjusting our staffing to decreased enrollment. But right now, there's a two-hundred-and-eighty-eight unit housing development fully permitted on Route Six, and that could come into play, I mean, at, at any time, once they get, you know, their act together and actually construct it. Two-hundred-and-eighty units, multi-bedroom units, I would assume, would produce a fair number of students. So, you know, we've sort of adjusted our staffing accordingly to, to the enrollment decline, but we could be asked pretty quickly to go back in the other direction. So, you know, our hope is, it was encouraging that, you know, we're going to be, you know, involved, at least, instead of reading it in Dartmouth Week, we'll, we'll, you know, at least know it's coming. Not that, not that that's going to make it easy to, any easier to plan for, but at least we'll know that, what the process is and what's on the horizon. And there are several other significant developments that are in, somewhere in that planning process right now, so.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I have, Madam Chair, is I know we have the, the teachers coming, the new teacher, new staff members at our next meeting.
A next meeting, yeah.
Next meeting type of deal. I'm just wondering, we did it a couple of years ago, a few years ago, and it was very well-received. If we had like our maintenance and custodian staff in to, to thank them, you know, for the work they did this summer with the heat and everything else, you know, bring Peter Chase in from DCTV, because they did a lot of work with the auditorium and the sound system at the football stadium and such, so just bring, you know, bring them all in just to be here and, you know, a little, a little thank you for them.
Little appreciation.
Good call.
Little appreciation.
Yeah, you know, that type of deal, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a little bit of a warm summer, and, you know, I can almost imagine what, what they went through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. So are you thinking for the next meeting or the one after that?
The one, the one.
Okay, that's great. So for the October.
We've got all the new faculty.
Okay.
Next, at our next meeting.
Yeah, and we do have a good number of new faculty.
Yeah, and so, you know, just, just bring them in, you know, is it the twenty-second, I guess, is the, that meeting?
Great.
Great. Thank you for that idea.
Yeah, no, just.
Yeah, that was nice.
Perfect. Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Anybody else? No? All right. Our next meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Monday, September eighth, twenty-twenty-five, ooh, at six. Do we switch to six? Six. Here in the Dartmouth School Media, or Library Media Center. Is it a roll call?
Nope.
Nope.
Madam Chair, are we doing a reception beforehand, like we've done in years past?
Oh, yes, we are. So that would be at five-thirty.
Like five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Okay, I just want to, I was just wondering.
I'm sorry, yes. I hadn't.
Meeting will be at six, and it will be in the five-thirty.
We will do a reception.
Okay. Do I need a roll call if we're not going into?
Nope.
We're just, okay?
Madam Chair, make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Newson, second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you all.
Told you.
Thank you.
Thank you.